...made a nine-one-one call from the grandmother. I can tell you with one hundred percent certainty, there was no nine-one-one call to the city of Uvalde by the grandmother. There was a call, but we don't know where it went to, and we don't know who got that call, and DPS won't tell us who got that call. So if that call came at eleven-twenty-one, the first response that we got that the grandmother was shot was eleven-thirty-five. The shooter got to this school before that, but there's fourteen minutes that are unaccounted for, that we don't know the answer to, and we would like to know. Secondly, we've invited the district attorney to come to city council, so she could explain to us and to you why we can't get any information. So that you would hear it firsthand, not, it's not from us trying to keep you from getting anything, but from her, that what's going on? She's declined to come to city council and talk to us. So, we're not trying to hide anything from you, we're not trying to do anything. We don't have anything. DPS has tied our hands, I've got two letters here I'll release again, they're both from the district attorney and the DPS. And if we did have something and we released it, then we would be subject to individual criminal charges. But we don't have it, we don't have anything to give you, or we would, I promise you.
So with all due respect, we're literally wasting our time coming to these council meetings, where do we need to go? Because if y'all, I mean, I, I understand y'all not getting the information that we want, and y'all made that fairly clear. So where is our next step? Because if we're not getting it from you guys, we need to find out where we need to go, and we need to go knock on the next door. Because this is getting ridiculous, that we're coming to these meetings and we're getting the same, again-
I agree.
Y'all are, y'all are in the same boat as we are, but we're looking for some answers that nobody seems to be getting, and it's just making Uvalde PD and everybody else look even more guilty.
I agree.
And all it's doing is just pissing everybody off even more. And, and people do not understand what anybody's going through that's in this room, because they don't have anybody that was affected. So they're keeping their little secrets and protecting their little PD, but it's not fair to the rest of us, that nobody's being accounted for, or whatever. We want to know what happened in there too, just like the next person. And everybody, all them cops that are around here, know exactly what happened in there, but they have a gag order to keep their mouth shut. But, what, what about us? What about us parents?
I, I agree, you, you should know before anybody, you should know even before we should know. We, and, and I will tell you, yesterday, I, I, I appeared bef- before the legislature's committee yesterday, and the one question that I asked, and I respect their investigation, because at least they're doing it behind closed doors, and you're not having to go home at six o'clock in the afternoon and turn on the news, and find something that somebody said in, in Austin, Texas, that none of you know anything about. And they are gonna issue a report, and but, and the question that I asked, and they're gonna, told me they would try to accommodate that way, that they would come to Uvalde to release that report, and they would meet with the families first, before it was released. And I hope they ca- I hope they do do that, because you, you do, you do deserve that. And the next question I asked was, and I'll tell you point-blank was, if the, if your investigation comes out different than the DPS's investigation, are you gonna release your investigation? And I was assured one hundred percent, they would.
Of course they're gonna tell you that, of course. And I, and I, as, we're already to the point where we don't believe anything that anybody said, because-
I, I'm with you.
From day one, everybody's lied, both paid, licensed, all of us, because everybody in this room has been lied to more than once, on one occasion since this ha- has happened. And we just want to know where we need to go next.
It's gonna be-
What is our next step? I think you can tell us answer.
I will answer that question, I, I'm gonna tell you exactly, and as mad as it's gonna make her, it's gonna have to be the district attorney's office. Because she's the person that's holding all the keys to the kingdom, I'm sorry, she's the one that's got all the answers, she's the one that's telling everybody they can't talk, but yet she'll go on the press and say, "I don't have an investigation going on," but yet, here's the letters, right here, right here. Tell them this, it's an ongoing investigation, you can't release nothing on the criminal charges.
So why is she protecting somebody else, and then protecting these kids and telling us what is going on? Who is she protecting, and why is she doing this?
I, I can't tell you, I, I can tell you, I can tell you Judge Mitchell and I talk every day, and he's as frustrated as I am. I, a- as the mayor of this community, I felt that any investigation, I should be getting some kind of briefing, something. Whether it's, "I can't tell you anything," or, "We know this," or, "Well, that." Judge Mitchell feels the same way, since day one, we've got zero. No, and I've asked the governor's office for it, I've asked the district attorney's office for it, I've asked the DPS officers for it, I've got nothing. I can't even tell you with, look anybody in the eye in here and tell you who's in charge of this investigation, because I don't know. I don't, and, and I, and I agree.
Then I have a question about that, I have a question about leadership, okay? Because I feel that everybody here has to represent our community and our people here, okay? And I question, I strongly question your leadership, you know? From the very beginning, we have been lied to, we waited hours for answers, just like today, they waited, everybody waited two hours. It's a waiting game. Thank you for finally coming out and saying that you don't have the answers, I respect that, but I don't respect the leadership.
That's fine, I, I mean-
I don't respect the leadership, and I, you know what, I believe everybody else here can say the same thing too, because we're not getting definitive answers. Now, leadership would be, if you say the DA is hiding information, then you bark up her tree.
I have, ma'am.
With your judge.
I have, ma'am.
Okay, well, apparently not so much for anything to be done, why aren't you barking up the governor's tree?
I have, ma'am.
You have?
You're, you're assuming-
No, I'm not assuming.
That I'm not doing anything.
I'm not assuming, you're seeing actions.
Look, I have been every day, talking to the governor's office, I've talked to DPS, I've called him out in public for it and everything. I don't know what more you want me to do, I, I, you know, I have been very vocal from day one. And the one thing I can look anybody in this face and say, is I have not lied to anybody, because I don't have anything to tell you. So I haven't lied to you from day one, I have said from day one.
From the very beginning, you did, sir, in the very beginning, at the school, at the school pavilion, you did lie to us, you lied to all of our faces.
Where?
When you said, "Oh, it was a pistol," it was not a pistol, we all knew from the very beginning-
I never said it was a pistol.
It was a rifle.
I never said it was a pistol, ma'am.
You said it was a pistol, like, okay, well, not, not that any of that matters, but what you're, what you're saying, you know, that you, the district attorney, because we've all dealt with her from day one, right? We already know what type of person she is. So my question is, if she has the answers that, I believe you, when you say she's not giving up to you, who can do something to her, to make her communicate with you as the mayor? I mean, you're, you're not just a parent or just an average person, I mean, you're the mayor. Who has to do something to this lady, for her to give us answers? Who, I mean-
The only other person in-
This falls, this falls in your ears. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not putting the blame on, on you, or I'm not saying it's you, or, or, or anything. I'm, I'm just asking you as the mayor, because, I mean, if, if they're not gonna give them to you, I doubt they're gonna give them to us. Who has to press this lady to get these answers?
The only per- I mean, it's e- it's either gotta come from the governor or the attorney general, and I'm not getting answers from either one.
The boss of the DA is attorney general, correct?
Can you also, can you also answer why they're not releasing like body cam footage? I know that's a big thing right now, they're not wanting to release that stuff, there's some organizations that are not wanting to release the body cam footage, and I would think that if they didn't have anything to hide, they would be releasing that information.
I agree, the only part, the only parts of the- The only parts of the body cam you're seeing are little big snippets that they want to come out of, of-
And those were leaked, right?
Yeah, those were leaked.
All the little things you're seeing all over the news.
Leaked, all, all the stuff.
Yeah, without the DPS on there, so we all know who leaked that one, because DPS wasn't even on there, and they were, they were supposed to be on that footage, but they're caught, they're cropped out, from what we understand.
So, so the city police, they're, they're hired by the city, by you, correct?
Well, by the city, not by me personally, no.
Okay, well, by the city of Uvalde, by taxpayers. So as a taxpayer, I'd like to know what you've done to question their badges to serve and protect our people.
What have I done to qu- to question and deter?
Yeah, to their badges.
Well, I mean, again, I can't comment on what's going on, because I don't know what's going on in the investigation. But I will tell you, I have, I do have confidence in these police officers, I do. Now, I'm not trying to slap any families in, in the face in here or anything, but, you know, th- this is an investigation, and a lot of things are gonna come out. Again, you, everybody wants to settle on the Uvalde Police Department and the School District Police Department. There were nine other agencies in that hall, nine other agencies.
Who was accountable? Who was accountable? Rob Elementary, why is it that Rob Elementary and all these other schools do not have the proper security in these schools?
I can't-
Rob, I used to teach there, that's a very open school.
I, I, you know-
And that was a deal a long time ago, and I was afraid, every time my kids went to recess, because it is, it could be a shooting spree every single day. Why is it that there was not proper security in all these schools?
Well, I, I can't answer that for the school district.
The school district doesn't want to pay any food.
What officers do you have? What I heard is that the main lane station in the high schools. Why is it that the little kids are not taken care of? They were not protected, they were thrown off road. This man, when he knew where to go, because having gone to the high school, all those kids would have gotten, out of camp, and they would have been done. Why is it that children are calling nine-one-one, and you can't tell where these calls are coming from, that y'all didn't get it? My sister had no, there's nothing saving her, but there's a lot of children that could have been saved, that Ella could have been saved. This was not, not supposed to happen. You failed, because you're not taking care of the city. Harold failed, because they keep protecting Pete Arredondo. The school board failed, because the minute this happened, they should have fired him. The minute that happened, someone should have said, "No, you failed to do your job." Had a teacher slapped a kid, she would have been fired on the spot, amen. There are nineteen children.
Ma'am, I, I, I realize-
Massacre, and this meeting is not an incident, this is a massacre, they're having a meeting about a massacre that happened.
Ma'am, let me tell you something, I, I feel your pain, we all do.
Oh, no you don't, sir, no you don't.
Well, and maybe not alluding to your child or sister, but as a citizen, and as a father myself, a parent should never, never. It should be a child very-
You answered my question perfectly, I was gonna ask you, you have kids, correct? Do you have kids?
Yes, sir, I do. Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. We want y'all to look at this, and as a mayor-
I'm not, I'm trying-
While I was a city council member, look at it as a dad, as a parent. Do, don't do what you can do as a mayor, go beyond that. I know there's a limit on what you can do, go beyond that. What if it was your kid?
I, you know-
You what, you can't say nothing?
I can't.
Nobody can.
You're right.
And we understand that. So do your part for us, if you can't say something, do something.
I'm trying every day, I promise you.
Well, we'd like to have a meeting with the governor.
Fine, I'll see if I can do it, sir.
I, I think you need to call, I think you need to call that, I think it needs to be put on the agenda, you need to mark it in the minutes, that we demand action.
We'll call, we'll call the chief of staff right now and see if he can do it.
Please do, please do. And so, one person should not have that much power. One person should not have that much power. That's the worst, with his failed district attorney, and I got to meet her a couple of days afterwards, and she was extremely cold.
Yes.
Extremely rude, and not empathetic at all. She should not have anything to do with this case, and I need your help to show us, because we don't know what to do. Everybody's passing the buck. We need to get her out, she has no business in that position she's at. No one should have that much power.
I will go there with you too and tell you, since the first time that I've heard her parents met with the district attorney, and the, and the way that they were talked to and so forth, I have complained to the governor on that also, I have complained to Tedom, Judge Mitchell has complained to Tedom, Judge Mitchell has complained to the governor, because we've heard horror stories of families having to go out there and visit with the district attorney. I haven't seen it firsthand.
And we're still going through it, because nothing's happening, nothing's hap- something, the day it happened, they knew, everybody knows and they're covering up, because they know that every agency failed her. Every agency failed.
You're right, Mr. Mayor, and the reason why we keep bringing up the school district and Uvalde PD, is because they're, they are here. We can't, we can't yell at you, or, or, over DPS or whatever, they're next. Well, don't, don't get us wrong and think that they're off the hook, because they're not. We come to you with just them, because that's who you're responsible for. And yes, everybody in here all agrees, that everybody on that force should not be on that force. And because why? Because they did not protect and serve, they did not do what they signed up to do, they did not do their job. They followed a freaking order that should have been breached, because there were so many children in that class. They should have had the common sense to breach, a human being, like, they're, half the officers are mothers or fathers or whatever, their parents too. If their kids would have been on that other side, I guarantee you, they would have did everything in their power to get on that other side of the door.
Just like Ruben tried, he got arrested, and he was, and he was an officer. You know, Ruben tried to go in and save his wife, and he got stopped.
If he would have got in, a lot of families would have been saved.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I, I understand.
It's an unfortunate event, now, listen, instead of being proactive, like the way we should have been, and said, "You know what, we have lots of bellouts at Rob, you know, maybe we, as a community, should get together and have extra force at Rob, just in case for extra security." As leaders, y'all should have done that in our community, so that you can sit, so you could pull together a union and say, "You know what, we wouldn't, we recognize there's a problem here, now how do we, how do we take care of that?" Now you're dealing with reaction, now we're all reactive, okay? Now, now, what are you gonna do now, in the future, to help make us more secure? Because I'll tell you what, this right here, this is what's given to my daughter, it's a cuddle cup. You have no idea, at night, how many screams I have to hear, this comforts me too. You know, what is the city doing to help us, our kids, our families? What are y'all doing? You know, you're not doing anything, we're not getting any answers, zero justice, nothing, and we're the ones that have to deal with everything. We're the ones, and y'all get to sit up there, y'all get to sit right there and shake your heads, and don't know how we feel over here on this side. Este es la gente, this is the people here, the people here are Hispanic, we're proud to be Hispanic, we're here to protect our kids, like we do, and now we're not gonna give up, like we won't.
Good, I don't want you to give up.
And when we start protesting, who's gonna be the first one trying to arrest us? The same cops that couldn't protect our kids, they're gonna go after us, because we started, we started protesting, and we started speaking up. Again, we're not blaming y'all, we're voicing our anger towards y'all, but because y'all are here, and we're, we're looking for answers.
And I, and I promise you, and, and I look everybody's deal, I ha- I will, I have been and will fight every day to get answers, every day.
Mr. Mayor, what do you expect the families to do when they're, when it's time to go back to school? What's going to happen, because my niece doesn't want to go to school.
Nope.
She's deadly scared.
I, I understand that.
I'm a teacher, I don't want to go to school. For the fear of what is not gonna happen, this cannot be brushed under the rug. Something has to happen to bring some, or a lot of relief to these parents, because school is mandatory, but who's going to protect them? Because we know that it's not the Uvalde school board, or the school police, we know it's not Uvalde city police, we know it's not DPS, we know it's not the Texas Rangers.
Well, I mean, we're gonna do all that we can to make sure this case-
What are you gonna do?
What is the actual plan for us to feel safe again?
I, I can't answer anything.
You're, you're in charge of this city.
I'm in charge of the city, I have nothing to do with the school district.
The school district doesn't want to pay any, they don't do anything.
For our community to feel safe again, what are you gonna do? How are you gonna change our minds, how are you gonna change the perception?
By, by the actions that we do, that we, we fund.
What actions?
That's why I'm asking for a governor and a DA to come here, and for you to re- and, and for this to be on record, that the community wants them here. And they better come, they better come, because we are in numbers, we will go.
Good, I, 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 I'm with you.
And you know what, we expect for you to be right next to us, not behind us, next to us.
I'll stand right there in the front with you, I've been asking for the answers from day one.
I have a, I have a question, because we went to, um, I think, a lot of parents here were at the school board meeting. I don't know if you've been to a school board meeting, but the last school board meeting that we went to and we attended, you know, they're talking of, and I understand the school has to still move forward with budgets and all these type of things, right? My thing is, school, I mean, the first, the first is tomorrow, school's starting next month already, right? So, even a lot of these parents, they have other children that still have to move forward with their education. The thing is, and, and all we keep hearing is, everything's gonna take time, it's an investigation, everything's gonna take time. Nobody's saying any, like, what are we supposed to do when the first day of school comes? I can't, I don't know one parent that says, "We're gonna leave our kid there kicking and screaming." So this is a thing that, I understand things take time, right? But we need to hear something now, because school's starting next month, and we all have other kids, we all, you know, I, I, I don't know what else to say other than, nobody's saying anything that's making anybody here any hopeful that anything's moving forward. Like, we're not hearing anything, we, we'll come and sit here for about an hour, just like at the school board meeting. Everybody went for one thing, and they didn't even talk about that, you know, they're talking about budgets and numbers and salaries and money. None of that stuff, even though it's important, none of that stuff matters if the kids are not at the school.
Exactly, because that's exactly where it's headed.
That's how the school makes their money.
That's what, that's what we need to do, we need to have a walkout. The same exact walkout that happened in what, two years?
Because our kids, our kids should let for those seats for everybody to get paid. Another thing that I'm disgusted with is double dipping, how people are in several positions, for instance, Rob Fowler, on the school board, employed by you, employed by the junior college, the only place that he doesn't have a foot in the door is the county. There's plenty of enough individuals here that can hold those seats. I've spoken to Mr. DiPiazza about it, I've spoken to you about it too. You know, time has to change here, you need to have a little bit more variety, because that doesn't represent who we are, it doesn't.
Are, are you counting on the school police to help us feel safe?
No, I, I, I'm counting on, the only thing I can promise is not the answer you want to do. When school opens up, there will be an overwhelming s- of law enforcement around there to make sure. Hopefully by then, the school, the school doors and everything will have been checked, re- relocked, the lock's done. I don't, like I said, I don't have any say over the school district still, but I can tell you-
You can voice our opinion.
That's right, and I will, and I will voice it.
That's why we're coming to you, because if we go to them and they don't even talk to us, I'm sorry, it's just gonna work.
And also, like, why not think better and say, "You know what, we'll have the elementary school at the high school," because it's an all internal rotation campus, and not have the upper, the upper individual kids at the elementary school, where they're older, and they can take order in external rotation.
At this point, all the kids from Rob are getting shoved everywhere. I think it's crazy that they're trying to put third graders with what, sixth graders? How are you gonna put all these kids in, I mean, that's, like, the Rob kids, I mean, I, I'm sorry, but I, I, I personally think, like, the crossroads, that's not something that's, that, I mean, I'm not saying it's not important, but these Rob kids are gonna need way more attention than everybody. Why is, I mean, all the funding y'all have gotten to build the school, that hasn't even, I mean, when is that gonna happen? School's starting next month, the, the time's going, and these Rob kids are getting shoved everywhere, they're just being stuck wherever they need to be stuck to make it work, like, that's not solving anything, you're, you're gonna put all these kids into a school, and they're not even gonna be properly tended to, because there's just gonna be so many kids, I mean, how do we as parents leave our kids somewhere where they're not even?
I, I, I understand your frustration, but like I said, I don't, I don't have the ability, even as mayor, e- e- even Judge Mitchell as a county judge, we don't have the jurisdiction over the school district.
You don't, but, but you have, you're safe, you're a teacher. They don't live there.
But what about with Mr. Harold, have you tried to meet and, and just given your input of what you thought? I mean, I mean, your voice is gonna make a big difference.
Sure, I've talked, I mean, Hal and I have talked, we've talked about destroying, tearing down Rob's school.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not gonna solve-
He's talking about, he's talking about building a new state-of-the-art school somewhere to replace Rob's school with.
I spoke to him a week before the first meeting, the special meeting, he told me that they had contractors, and they were looking at it. That Wednesday, he thought we'll speak about it on the meeting, I blasted it on Facebook, everybody went, and what? No, nobody spoke about nothing.
They do have, I, I, and this much I can tell you, they do have contractors and that. But again, you're not gonna like the answer I'm gonna give you, they're being told it will be November, December for that school's release back.
Well, I guess our kids won't go to school till then.
So, I mean, I'm just telling you, if the Rob's-
If we can answer the school's-
I can't, I wish I could, so.
Mayor, have you or any of the council members spoken to Councilman Arredondo as of this point? And if not, why haven't you spoken to a fellow city council member over the last couple of weeks, to get, to get answers for him?
The only time I spoke to him was when I asked for his, when he asked for an extension to put in writing, and I have not talked to him since.
And Mr. Mayor, after this massacre, because it's not an incident, it's a massacre, why didn't you just fire him? Why is it that y'all have to go by these laws that make no common sense?
You can't, you can't.
Or just mention without pay, mention without pay. He gets paid to be on leave, when all these people are, are at home without pay, but he's sitting at home all pretty with pay.
He doesn't work for us, and we don't get paid, this is a, this, you're just voted in here by the people.
Oh, well, again, school district has-
So we don't get paid, he's the school.
I'll vote everybody. I'll go all, I'll vote Harold, I'll vote all the school board, y'all, because nobody's giving us any answers. It's been over a month, you have no idea how frustrating this is, no idea. And we're sitting here, just listening to empty words, that's all it is, empty words. My sister died protecting her children, her students, and you have officers there sitting there, afraid to go in? And this idiot, Arredondo, lying about trying to find a key to go in when the door was open, because the principal didn't make sure that her school was safe, mandated with the others, vice principal, I don't even know her name, but at this point, that is, that is like unbelievable to me, unbelievable that these people are walking around like nothing. And my nieces and nephews have to see them at Walmart or HEB, or go to school, and know that they still have their jobs, because, well, we have to follow them. So suck it up. These kids were obliterated, my sister was obliterated, it was a closed casket. I couldn't hug her, I couldn't touch her, I couldn't say my last goodbye. How do you sit here, look, I don't know, I have no control, it's, that's them, it's this, it's the freaking DA. There has to be some help, we're asking you for your help, and I don't know, you're pretending to call or something, but we need something to happen now. We need change, enough is enough, this is ridiculous. It is frightening to be a teacher now, now they want to harm teachers, that's the stupidest thing I've ever heard. You need to do something, these kids are not gonna go back to school, and it's gonna be on y'all's hands. This, blood is on your hands, because you failed to do anything. I thought for sure the first week, give them a week, because after that first day, I'm like, they know, there's body cameras, there's surveillance, there is audio, there are surviving kids, there's a surviving teacher. You have facts. The fact that y'all are sitting there doing shit.
Hey, if I may say something to you-
It's really infuriating, I had a drive from San Antonio, so that I wouldn't miss this. And we are trying to just hold on to each other. The stories are perfect, all these parents.
Ma'am, if I can say something, I'm sitting here and listening to y'all, and I can't sit here and say that I feel your pain, because I don't, I really don't. As, like the mayor has in, in, uh, stated in the beginning, there are facts out there. The problem is, we don't know what they are, because the DA is not releasing that information to us.
And she's not, she's not, she's gonna cover herself and cover all of these agencies, she's not.
That lady, that lady, Mr. Busby's an elected official.
So how do we unelect her?
How do we get her out?
Because she already made that clear for the families. She, she said, "I will not resign, I've had my job for so long, I will not resign."
She both faced lies to all these families the day of the, the massacre. The first day.
And she told us, "I will not resign," that's what she told us.
The first day, she both faced lies, everybody's telling her, "I'm gonna tell you where your children are."
She was elected by the district of Uvalde. That, that, that's your hard part.
What do we need to do?
You can recall, you can recall, neither one of us said if you lied.
That for you. Oh, she's been there more than a month.
But to answer your question, to answer your question, there are facts out there, ma'am, there are facts out there, we don't have privilege to that. The DA has written letters, that not to release the information, or else we will be prosecuted for that. And what's that, what's that gonna solve?
We want to know a date, whenever you contact them, when we can meet with them as families, so we can ask them directly questions, so if you could please get us a date?
I, I, I don't know what's on that today.
And I'm talking about all heart of relationship.
Run and tell everyone of those people right there, right there, that you want, and, 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 so the governor knows when I call.
District Attorney, Governor, everybody that's accountable for this massacre that happened here in Uvalde, be accountable. Come here, show your face, don't be scared, we're here showing our face, because we've lost somebody, or somebody's suffering. Enough is enough, show your face, we have questions, we, we want answers, we demand answers. We're not here just to sit around, we are demanding answers. Show your face, answer our questions now, 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 now.
Thank you, that way when I call him, he will see what you, what you told him, he'll get the message across. And I, and I will be calling.
Thank you.
But by you doing that, there's no way he won't see that tonight, no way, if he's not seeing it right now.
And it's sad, it's sad, because she was just at graduation, front and center, seeing her daughter graduate and walk the stage, yet she can't come over here and, and face us, but she was there, you know, obviously she's somewhere, somewhere more important than here, but she was at graduation, you know, front and center to see her daughter walk, but she can't come here and answer questions.
And I'm sure she's being protected by security over there, I'm pretty sure there's a couple of UPDs over there too, protecting her, just like they're protecting Arredondo around here. And I'm sure she's being protected by security over there. I'm pretty sure there's a couple of UPDs over there too, protecting her, just like they're protecting Arredondo around his house. That's our tax dollars paying to protect him.
Yes, sir.
What is the Uvalde Police Chief answer to?
City manager.
City manager.
I'm a remake.
A city manager, my name is Ted Henry. What, what are we gonna do to hold these officers that didn't follow policy accountable?
You just said you're in charge. Why are you turning that away?
I'm just checking to see if they want me to answer that question.
We want to answer that question.
I work with these gentlemen here. I'm, uh, as in the dark as they are.
So what pressure are you putting on the chief?
The police chief of the city of Uvalde.
Well, who was in charge that day? Because apparently the chief of police that day was on vacation, so he was in the area. So who was in charge that day?
He was not there.
Who was in charge?
Body cam footage?
Who was in charge that day? Can you answer who was in charge, or do I have to spell it out?
We had an acting chief.
Why don't you tell me who was in charge that day?
We had an acting chief that day.
Okay, who was it?
That was Mariana Park.
Who was it?
Detective Park.
And what was he doing?
That day running around?
Uh, I believe he was at the scene.
So why haven't any of the Uvalde police officers been to the district police since the, the school district chief of police could put on?
We, we had a lot of officers on the scene. If I put off, if we put all of them on the leave, we wouldn't have any to cover the town.
Well, what does it matter? What does that matter? We had all the, the, all different departments from different cities here, here protecting. We have, they were ready to stay as long as they needed to.
Well, they were here for a time, but they had to go back to their own communities.
Do you realize your officers are standing on the opposite side of the plaza, trying to protect the protesters that are out there, but they're on the opposite side? Would you view that as maybe harassment?
On the opposite side of the plaza?
On the opposite side of the plaza, the protesters are on Getty and Main, and you had two of your officers at the backside of the plaza because somebody called in a threat to the protesters, but they were on the backside. Would you consider that harassment?
I'm not even sure what you're talking about.
Well, now you are. These families are trying to protest and have people held accountable.
And it's not the music at all.
I mean, it's just, I mean, just from your, your body, your facial expression, I mean.
Um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to hear what you're saying. I'm trying to decide how, how it is that I can alleviate some of your concerns.
Tell them to release the body cam footage.
So I step down.
We've had, we've had a number of conversations, I believe, we've had a number of conversations about that, and I'm hoping we're gonna be able to do that. There's some, there's some laws that we have to overcome, there's some other legal procedures. I know you all don't wanna hear that.
Where are those laws when all those kids come?
I know, you don't wanna hear that.
They didn't follow practice. They didn't follow practice. They should be put on administrative leave. Not just that, they literally took a class in March of, of pertaining to this situation and did not do nothing that they were taught in that class.
My problem is that I don't have all the facts.
Why don't you?
You all, you all, you are telling me, you all, you all are telling me what you think the facts are, and you may be correct, but I don't know that yet. And I don't have enough information yet to make that decision.
So what have you done to get, what have you done to get the facts, sir?
I'm not implying to take action against people that are employed by the city without knowing the entire story first.
Here's, here's one thing, here's one thing that we've, we've done. We, our officers to write a statement after an instant report? It's been directed by DPS and Texas Rangers not to write a statement. Why?
Yeah, they were given a.
You're saying UPD was, was directed by DPS not to write a statement about, about the massacre that happened?
That's right.
Because we were told when we went to the Fairplex, when the median family went and met with.
Did he interview over a hundred officers?
No, yeah, but the, one of the Texas Rangers told, told us that any officer that was on the scene of what happened that day were not supposed to be working for a certain amount of time after that happened because of everything they saw. That didn't happen. There was a lot of officers that were on the scene that day that were working the next day, two days after that. They were not, you know, they're, apparently is what the Texas Ranger said, is that they're not in the proper state of mind to do their job after everything they just saw. Where were they? I mean, because y'all had cops from all over the state.
The same officer that handcuffed my son was right across the street at Rob while we were at the, at the viewing for my granddaughter. The same officer that put him in handcuffs was right across the street, and we couldn't do shit about it because, of course, he's being protected. Why was he still on a week later? Why was he still even on duty a week later when he was, he was, he was there? These are the things that we get, that are upsetting to us. Then, again, you are here and we're just lashing out at you because you are here, you are our mayor, and we just expect you to back us up. Like I said before, we're here for the voices of all the, all those that were, that were massacred, and you are our voices. And that's what we're here for.
And I will try to be that voice, and have tried to be that voice, and will continue to try to be it. But like I said, I'm getting the same, you know, like you, the district attorney that most of you have described in here and talked to. I, I, I've had one heated argument with the district attorney. He basically got told I could go fly a kite.
No, she doesn't have a heart. She don't care. No, she don't care.
Is she in her office today?
She don't care.
Do what?
Anybody know she's in her office today?
I couldn't tell you that.
I think we should just all get up. She's gonna have security. No, what's gonna happen is that they're gonna, is that they're gonna be all arrested. That's what they're gonna do. We're gonna be arrested by Uvalde finest.
Most of these families want accountability. Is there a way, according to your city charter, that you can hold the third council, or the fifth council person accountable for his actions outside of voting him out of office?
Not according to, not according to the laws that we looked at because he hadn't been convicted of a crime or anything, if nothing does.
You can't demand that he comes to a meeting now?
I don't think anybody on here would, would, would disagree with anybody in here. But we would be doing the same thing that you're having hearings in Washington now. If we would've said Pete Arredondo can't take the oath of office, and every one of us would've been, his district elected him at the time. Times have changed since then and that, and that. We can't, we can't stop him from taking the oath of office. This is his second meeting. If he misses the third, I don't think there's anybody up here that will tell you that we won't, we won't take the action that we need to take.
What I'm asking is, can you force him to come to a meeting though, so that people can ask him his own questions?
The, the emergency meeting that we had, the very first emergency meeting, it does not count because it was not posted within, like this one was. This one was posted well in advance, so it was the last meeting. The first one was posted less than twenty-four hours.
However.
So why is he not here?
However, I'm arguing that point.
Does anybody know why he's not here?
They committed a third meeting today.
Why is he not here?
Yeah, what, what is his excuse? Why is he not here?
I don't know. We haven't talked to him. We haven't talked to him. He got an notification like we all do about the meeting. He chose not to be here.
Well, the city charter, it doesn't say anything about excluding emergency meetings or anything about that.
It just says meetings.
By, it just says, it just says council meetings. It doesn't say anything about, uh, special meetings, citizen council meetings.
If you hear you. If you hear you, and if, if this could be the third meeting, it's gonna be the third.
If you guys want him out, why didn't you have the meeting on Tuesday instead? He canceled that one. So you could've had the meeting on Tuesday and then had this one.
We didn't have a meeting scheduled this week.
No, we didn't.
There was supposed to be a council meeting, it was canceled on Tuesday.
The second.
This was the fourth, this was the fourth Tuesday, this past Tuesday.
Mayor, walk through the process. If he misses the third meeting, you guys can take a vote, write it in there, he's immediately removed. Walk through that process.
Well, I, I, I'll have to give advice, but yes, that's my understanding. If he misses the third meeting, we can take a vote.
We declare that, that he's vacated the seat, and then we call for a special election. On the spot. I believe we can.
And we, and we'll have to give clarification, like, yes, on the spot.
Believe me, if this is the third meeting or the next is the third meeting, there's gonna be something on the agenda to discuss it.
He will be on the agenda.
Wasn't the last day of voting on the twenty-fourth? The last day of voting was on the twenty-fourth. Why wasn't there like an extension period or why wasn't it like stretched out or whatever? Because of what happened. I mean, I'm pretty sure a lot of people didn't even get to vote because of what happened.
Election day was May seventh.
No, there was an election that day.
There was an election that day.
Special election.
That was the last day.
That was the last day.
Final day first of voting, first of council was on the seventh.
Seventh of May.
There may have been other elections after that, but then everything was a runoff.
Because the day that we came here, they were all still with the voting on the outside.
That's a totally different.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Luna.
Mr. Chris is in here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I wanted to say something that I've observed in this crowd. I've covered city halls off and on for forty years, almost. I don't think I've ever seen anything like this. The people here don't trust you on the council, just you as a group. I don't think they trust the school board at all. They don't trust the police. Uh, she's sitting there saying that they'll just arrest us if we protest the local police. Uh, and it's astonishing. Have you ever seen anything like this?
I haven't.
Are you stunned at what you're seeing here?
I am, I am. And, and look, I'm not a quitter, but if this community feels like I haven't done a good job for them as mayor, and they want me to resign, I'll be happy to. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not, everything I've done for this community or fought for this community has been for this community. Because I do have a business, I do, and it's, I've been very blessed in. I get fifty dollars to be mayor. Fifty dollars. And I've spent way more the last four years of my time on the city business than ever. That doesn't take away any of these families' pain, and I can't even imagine their pain and so forth. But if, if this community doesn't think that I have fought for them and will fight for them, and they want me to step down, then I'll be happy to step down. Not a problem.
I can tell you by my voice, I don't, I don't know, I can't say for anybody else, but I feel that you're probably the only one that I feel is on our side. And that whether you lie to us or not, I'm, 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 I trust that you have it. But you're the only one that has actually showed compassion towards us, and there's a couple of more on that, on, up there that have to. There's been two that sit here and make faces every time we speak, and it's very insulting to us. They did it the last time. One of them actually rolled my eye, rolled his eyes while I was sitting up there speaking, and I called him out on it. But you are, I, I, for myself, and I don't know if I have the backup here, but I can say that I do trust what you're saying to us.
I can tell you, I'm gonna fight for this community, and I'm gonna fight for answers for your parents. I'm just as frustrated as you are. I, I don't feel the pain that you felt because I didn't lose a child. I don't. Is, is my heart sad for you? Yes. More, more than I can ever explain. But I can tell you, I ask every day, I, Judge Mitchell and I talk every day, to try to figure some angle to get answers. Because we're not getting them. We're not getting them.
What's gonna happen to the officers that didn't go in, that just stayed there, all monitors?
Look, one, once, we, we have been stopped from doing anything. We will have an outside internal review of all the actions of our officers that were done by an outside review on everything, and if anybody, whatever, anybody that did something wrong will be held accountable at that time.
Okay. Who can hold them accountable?
We can once we do, but we have, we can't do it without, we cannot do it, contrary to, and I know your frustration, but we can't do it until we've been released to do it. Right now, we can't even do an own internal investigation of our own department because of these letters right here and the district attorney and DPS.
And she's the one in charge of that investigation, correct?
Do what?
Busby, she will be the one that will, will handle these people getting prosecuted.
DPS is gonna give everything to her.
But she's the one that's gonna get charged with it, right?
She is.
But I'm, I believe it was the lady in the back who found this legal loophole to get Pete out of here. Could you find somebody to dig and find the legal loophole to get her out of there?
If you remember, at the last meeting, we actually read that statute of seven things. It went a loophole, we, we, we were already working towards that.
But I mean, the only way you're gonna, the only way you're gonna change your district attorney deal, just like what they're doing in California, you're gonna have to start a recall petition. You're gonna have to start a recall petition, just like you would have to do on me or any other councilman up here. You know, unless we voluntarily went, you have to start a recall petition. You'll have to get whatever she got in the election. I don't know what that is, I'll have to ask. But if she got six thousand votes the last time, then you have to get a percentage of those six thousand votes that would, that would justify a recall. Those signatures will have to be verified and then looked at, and at that point, once they're verified, then you can call for an election, for a recall election and then have a deal. It's the same thing you can do to any one of us up here too.
And once that happens, who actually pulls her from her job, like tells her, you can't, this is not your job?
The day, the day you have a recall election and she loses, it's, she's out.
She's out.
She's out.
How do you do the process? How, how?
I don't know the process.
So you're looking at it, getting help, was trying to.
You get signatures, addresses, numbers.
That's local law.
Do what?
I'm just telling, I was telling Jeff and the rest of you, I don't know that there is a recall process for, for.
So just to make that clear, we are going to start that recall.
You all have it, you all have it for the council, you all have it for the council because that's the local, that's the local city charter that provides for it. You can recall any of these people.
I'm pretty sure there's a bunch of legal attorneys that are willing, more than willing to donate their time to figure out how to.
Maybe something out there. I just don't, I would be, I would be careful about saying what.
I don't know, I don't know that all. No, just Uvalde.
Uh, Mayor, you said that the state and DPS and the DA's office, uh, basically supersede your investigation process. Um, so can you not start any part of your investigation on the city level until they are done? And have they given you a timeline on that in order to, you know, to tell these people, you know, we're talking weeks, months?
I've had two different timelines. I've had two different timelines, so neither one's been there.
What were those timelines?
One was gonna be last week and the other one was gonna be this week, and that's our.
You guys have said that you can't release the body cam footage or anything of that nature. Have you even been able to see it?
No.
Why can't you see your own body cam footage?
Because the DPS technically owns it right now.
Have you seen it? Have you ever seen it?
No, I have not seen it.
Well, somebody has it. I mean, even the footage from inside the school, who has access to that?
DPS has it.
And y'all can't even see footage from inside the school.
That's what you think, what, what do you think, why we're so frustrated?
Our own.
Our own deal, we can't see.
Our own stuff that, that's came from Uvalde PD, the nine-one-one tapes, all that stuff, in theory, at the moment, the DPS owns it.
And no one has a copy of it? I mean, it's not saved in, in any way?
What's that?
It's not saved in any way?
But we can't.
We don't have access.
We don't have access to it because.
I can't imagine this is the only copy.
I'm sure that, no, I'm sure it's not the only copy, but what, what they have is, they have a lock on our files not to release any files.
It's just crazy that this man that's head of DPS that's going and talking all over the place, you know, has all this information, times and all this, and we know nothing.
It's an investigation, and he tells us we can't say anything. He can go on national TV and talk all he wants.
He's a little that goes face lines to his own. He's telling us, oh, I'll look into it. Oh, I'll look into it. Oh, that's a good question. We'll look into it. All along, knowing he had all the information to begin with.
What's that, the?
Mr. McDonald, like he, we, when we went to the briefing?
He was there.
Every, every question, every parent was there and did the same thing. Oh, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
All along. It was for four or five days, which is a disaster because he kept changing his story because he found out something.
He's the one person that came out and, the first person that held a press conference at Rob to talk about it, it was him the whole time.
And he, and he changed the story from the guy before in the day.
It's been changed so many times out of his mouth.
We're just as frustrated, and I, I don't know how we can convey that to you because we want, we want it to, we want it to, and when we get it, we're gonna let you know.
Yeah, I mean, I, just so you know, the Department of Justice started their, it's already started their investigation. I met with them yesterday, and I told them the same first speech I told you, that I couldn't tell them who's in charge of this investigation. That I have not wanted to receive one briefing from day one from this, and their reaction was they couldn't believe that we hadn't got any information.
I mean, he's gone out and spoke, right? I mean, did anybody else watch the videos of him speaking, whoever?
Absolutely.
He, he threw Pete out.
That's where we learn more stuff. We learn more stuff there.
So many times, I mean, that was public for everybody to see, so that's why I'm saying I find it hard that they can't do anything to him when he's the head over there, posed with the head on to and charge, and he's throwing his name out there, and still, it's like these people are insulting.
He said that. We heard it for the first time, just like you, and we don't believe him either. At this point, we don't believe him.
He's like, when he said, when he said the grandmother called nine-one-one, that I do know. We did check that. There's no nine-one-one call.
No one called, not the grandmother.
Nobody.
So how do we know they're not gonna hide footage, your life?
Look, if I, if I tell you, if I, if I know that somebody's hiding footage or doctoring footage or trying to hide it, the only footage that I will fight for that will not be released will be the video of that classroom with those children and teachers in it. I, I don't think anybody should ever have to see that video, and I don't want to see it myself.
Mayor, can you clarify the, the DOJ conversation you had? Did they show up in person? Did they call your office? What were they asking, and what were you telling them?
This was a, pretty much, they wanted to know what I, it was just a, pretty much a preliminary meeting, just for them to come into town, tell us they were at the start, uh, their investigation, or had already started their investigation. They introduced us to each and every one of the people that will be on it, on the panel that will be investigating it, and we just talked back and forth about what, uh, what had transpired, nothing far more yet. But they're gonna be back in Uvalde probably within the next couple of weeks.
How many DOJ representatives showed up?
Twelve to fourteen.
And, and tell me again that they were dumbfounded by what you had said?
They, they, they couldn't believe that we hadn't had a briefing. Couldn't believe that we hadn't had a briefing, that me or the county judge had had a briefing.
Did they make any promises to you, to you as far as what they're gonna do?
No, they said, the only promise they told me that it would be a fair and unbiased and non-political report when they got there.
You know what? We're talking to the families, and then we'll talk to the press.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
You guys said that the purpose of today's meeting was to get a briefing from the city attorney. You guys, that's why you met in closed session, was to, for him to tell you exactly what you guys knew. Did any of you learn anything that you didn't know at twelve o'clock when we met in here?
No.
So what, what took two hours?
To argue why we can't get, why we can't get-
Why we can't get what we want.
Why we can't get what we want. Because I don't think there's a person up here, in all honesty, that doesn't want stuff to start being released.
You know what I'm gonna suggest, you guys, at the, at the last, did everybody go to the last school board meeting? Most of you, were y'all limited to the time you could talk?
They had, they had five seats, three minutes apiece, and they had a clipboard.
I'll go with you guys, but the next one, you, you need to insist that there's no time limit, we've never given you guys a time limit.
I insisted less, I insisted less.
Then assist again, because they don't have to enforce it.
I've spoken, I've been emailing, spoken to them personally, they do not listen.
They need to sit here and listen, just like we do, I mean, we're trying to listen, we, we hear everything you're saying. They need to do the same thing, instead of just giving three minutes.
You know how hard it is at a school to even talk to a principal as a parent? You have to go and fill out papers, and there's a process to even talk to the principal at a school just on a regular basis if something's happening with your kid.
Go to that next school board meeting, make sure all these guys are there, and insist that you have no time limits and you can talk to them, and they can sit there all night long.
I didn't think that.
They don't answer back, like, y'all, like, y'all-
But they can, they can if they want.
No, they don't.
We have the same, we have the same rules.
They sit there and totally ignore what we say, they sit there in the same, I mean-
We have the same rules, and we usually have a little timer, and if you remember the last meeting, it, it rang a couple times, and we, we threw it out the window, and-
Y'all just need to remember that we elected those people in those seats, okay?
They need to listen to you.
So we can make a change, we can make a change, so that's all we have to remember.
I mean, when the last meeting, we were all there, all these parents went in there, and-
I watched it, and I was a, I was a stand-up.
And they, you know, spoke about their loved ones, you know, our son is, is a survivor, they, you know, but he's not the same. But it's at the time too, sir, like, they didn't seem to care, they were all quiet, you know, two people maybe shed tears.
They didn't make one comment about anything.
One comment, one word, since then it went to budgets.
I saw it.
Like, that's not hard there.
They need to hear you over and over, all night long, protest, all night long. That's what it takes to get them to listen.
Start protesting to get rid of them.
Yeah.
So, Mayor, just on there on this, when you guys went in there and spent your hours talking, you were arguing amongst yourselves about what you did, why you didn't get information?
No, we were arguing, we were arguing why we couldn't get access to it.
To who?
Why we couldn't have access to our own stuff. Why do we not do it, and again, we were told over and over and over because of these two letters and these two codes here, that we can be criminally charged.
Who told you that?
The attorneys, and so the district attorney's letter reads, the district attorney's letter reads, please be advised that the mass shooting that occurred at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas on May the twenty-fourth, twenty-two is currently being investigated by the Texas Rangers and the FBI and remains an ongoing investigation. Any release of records to that incident at this time would interfere with said ongoing investigation and would be a thorough and complete investigation, therefore, I request any records or reports to be withheld under section five-five-two point one-oh-eight of the Texas Government Code, which means if we release it, then we, she can take us, each and every one of us, to the grand jury and indict each and every one of us.
It didn't say, it said withheld, it didn't say from who.
The what?
Did it say from the public, did it say?
It says withheld, she's talking in general, anybody and everybody. And so does the DPS, as the DPS reads, the Texas Department of Safety understands that you are representing the city of Uvalde. Everybody that has received and will continue to receive public information requests made pursuant to Texas Public Information Act for records related to the incident at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas, I mean, to please be advised that the Texas Rangers has an open and ongoing investigation into the incident that occurred May the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Release of records of that incident at this time would interfere with the ongoing investigation. Therefore, we request the records be withheld under section five-five-two one-oh-eight of the Texas Government Code.
Mayor, can you tell, what's the charge you would be charged with if you do release information? What would be the charge that you would be facing if you do release information?
If she gets an indictment up to, uh, uh, jail time?
No, I'm, I'm asking what's the charge?
The obstructing justice, obstructing investigative, criminal investigation.
Oh, come on, you're not taking it for the team.
Huh?
Come on, you're not taking it for the team.
Yeah, well, I-
But who did you, who did you meet with during the two hours you guys were gone?
The what?
Who were you guys meeting with?
We met with, we met with, I, the, the, again, they're not attorneys that we hired, but our insurance company sent two attorneys here that represent the municipal league, which we are a member of, that's where our insurance comes from. And so their attorneys were in there also, there were two of their attorneys in there also.
So perhaps they need to be at the meeting as well, whenever we have only one question to answer?
They can't, those, those two attorneys can't answer any of your questions.
That's why we, we can only talk to you in a closed session.
They can't answer any of your questions, they're gonna tell you.
So that we, we have to, we have to use you as a segue, as a middleman, we ask you questions to ask them?
No, they're gonna tell you, they're gonna tell you, they're not gonna release anything under attorney-client privilege. Because they represent the city, they're gonna tell you they can't release, they can't answer any of your questions.
We can't even meet with them without calling a meeting, that's why we called this meeting, so we could actually, we've never met with them in, in, in this, in a group like this. He hasn't, and this attorney has nothing to do with that?
Not with them.
Not with them?
Not with them.
No, so you're just cold-hearted. I, I was thinking you were just, you know, rolling your eyes, not giving anybody any eye contact, just because, you know, you were trying to make sure that these guys didn't say anything they're not supposed to say, you know? But you're actually on, on, you're part of these guys, right?
He's the city attorney.
I told you, I told you that there, most of them weren't there, but there was a couple of them up there that was cold.
So we're just gonna have to go Gray Gavin, and Gray Gavin is in charge of the district attorney?
Gray Gavin is not in charge of this county, Ken Paxton is in charge of this county, Ken Paxton. Well, look, look, I understand the frustrations here, even though some of you feel that I don't, I do. I don't feel, I, I'll never feel the pain you're feeling, but I do understand the frustrations.
And we can sit here and point out, you do, you do, you do, you do, you don't, and you don't.
Well, I mean-
If y'all wanna know who, who we're talking about.
But I mean-
Because you legit rolled your eyes at me at the last meeting, when I was talking about, about how we were feeling, you went, like, you were sitting there with your hands like this, and you go, and I called you out, and I was like, yeah, just sit there, roll your eyes at me, you did, and if you didn't catch it, or I'm sure everybody else did, go look at the video, and you can see yourself doing it.
Well, I will, I will start making calls today to get that meeting set up with the governor, or asked for it. I will be very transparent in the answer that I get. I will tell you, since he's been in Uvalde, I've had to go through his chief of staff, I have not got to talk to him direct, but I do have his chief of staff's number, and I will call it, and if I don't get an answer, I'll give you his chief of staff's number, you can start.
Has he called Ken Paxton as well?
I've called the Attorney General no less than probably, I haven't called him on this incident, but no less than fifty times in the last year and a half, and hadn't got a return call back yet.
Yeah.
I mean, there's not, there's not one of your elected officials in the last three years that I haven't called over and over and over, and the only time I got response calls, when I went on a news show, and the newscaster actually shamed him into calling. That's the only time I got calls from our higher elected officials.
How many, how many investigations did you say were ongoing at the last meeting?
Well, the, right now, you have, you have an FBI investigation going on, because there was, Border Patrol was there, the Border Patrol officer was wounded. You have the Texas Rangers having an investigation, which I call Texas Rangers DPS, one and the same, and you have the district attorney's office.
But, so why do you-
And then you also have the legislature, who is doing a closed-door meeting, because they're trying to get witnesses, so that they'll be more, be more candid to talk and tell their story truthfully than they would in a public setting, but if you'll notice, the senate hearing that we had in Austin, you didn't have any, you had no body from Uvalde, nobody from anywhere else, you had the DPS commander is the only one who spoke.
That's what, that's where I was going, um, because if you have four people conducting an investigation, why does the DPS have a monopoly on the body cam? Why is it the only one to have those records?
Well, I mean, there's four, there's four people have, there's four people have those deals, and that's the DPS, the district attorney, the FBI, and the legislature. That's who has control of that.
So the district attorney here in Uvalde, she has all that stuff too?
Yes.
We assume, yeah.
We assume.
She's right here, sitting literally right down the street, she has all these-
And why didn't she come to the meeting?
The what?
He just said she declined to come.
Oh.
Yeah, we invited her to come to, I didn't invite her to this council meeting today, but we sent a formal invitation to her, or, uh, we had a call with her, a formal invitation to come, and she declined to come to the meeting.
And have you tried to get ahold of her?
Have I?
Have you?
I'm not on her favorite list.
Don't feel bad, I'm not either.
I don't begin with, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, she got it from this family, she sure did get it at the briefing, well, she got it from most families at the briefing, she had it, because she both faced lies to us, like, and that's just, that was from day one, day one, so she lost our trust, our complete trust.
Believe me, we've heard from numerous people of the treatment you've had, I haven't seen it firsthand, but I don't agree with it, I don't agree with it at all. And like I said, I, I don't, I have, I have made inquiries toward it and calls for it, so has Judge Mitchell, and like I said, I don't think that she has been, uh, how should I say? Forthcoming and more caring than what she showed, I've heard some statements she's made.
It's pretty sad that anybody's holding that footage, but for her, that this community elected her in, that she should be on our side, is holding that, that is another blow, another slap in the face that we're getting from this community, and it's so unprofessional and so-
I agree.
We, like, I just, that's, I, I just don't even have words for it, like, I just can't believe that this is happening, I just can't.
Mayor, besides the recall, is there anything that the families can do to get to the district attorney? And can you or anybody protect them if they were to protest?
Look, if you wanna have a protest, if you have a peaceful protest, we'll stand behind it all day long. But if you're gonna have a violent protest, a violent protest, where you're gonna get violent with people?
We're all going to, we're not going to stop.
I mean, I can't, we can't, I can't, I won't support that, but I mean, I'll support any protest you wanna do, if it's, you know, everybody has a right to protest, no problem. But violence isn't the answer, it's gonna bring you answers, because all you do is take, when you have, when you have violence in a protest, all it does is cheapen your protest. It makes it not worth what it was for, you're asking for rights and different things, but if you get violent, it doesn't do it so-
Would you participate in the peaceful protest with them?
Sure, be happy to.
We're at the plaza every Saturday, Sunday, twelve to two, counting to, screaming for accountability.
Okay, I was out of town this last Saturday when y'all had your first one.
Five weeks.
When is her term?
Twenty twenty-four.
Did she just get realized? When?
Twenty twenty?
Okay.
Nobody ran against her, nobody was under the radar.
So somebody, oh, so somebody has to run against her?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's like any other, see, you have an opponent, or you don't have an opponent. She didn't have an opponent.
So if she doesn't have an opponent, what happens?
She won by process of elimination.
Wow, so she didn't win, she didn't win from votes?
And then, and then later on, everything about her has come out from her past.
So that's another thing, you need to find someone to vote, to run against her.
Somebody else brought up a good point about maybe being disbarred for, you know, comments, conduct, but that's just another story.
Yeah, we will, we will, we, I will, I will make calls, and if we can get the governor here and the council before the next council meeting, we'll haul, we'll call a special meeting for that time. If not, I'll ask the governor if he won't come to council, and if he'll at least schedule a meeting with all the family members who come see y'all. And we'll make the civic center available, or whatever building they need.
You know, even if he says that he's busy, he could do something like Zoom.
He's not too busy, I mean-
Or, you know, there's, there's alternative ways, but here's a deal, you know, there's gonna be a million excuses on why we can't answer the questions, why we can't provide this, why we can't provide that, but what we need here is to know that they have, that y'all have our backs, you know, because right now, we feel like none of y'all, I mean, it's scary, it's scary to be on this side.
Well, I'm gonna tell you for one, right now, I, I, I haven't had confidence in the district, in the, the DPS since the third press conference, because it changed every time. That's why I asked for the Department of Justice.
Neither did I, neither did we.
And, and just right now, and like I said, I can poke holes in some of Colonel McGraw's, you know, just things that I know that I saw myself. Not because I know it privy to any investigations, just 'cause I was there, I was in the meetings when he had the governor in that, we had, we, where he just quietly omitted statements that were made in that meeting, I was in that meeting. So, I mean, and I named all the people that were in that meeting, that, that, you know, they'll have to sit there and say they didn't hear it, I don't think so. But I mean, like I said-
Mr. Mayor, the, the, this meeting that you would have with the governor, could you explain how that format would work? Would it be an open hearing with all the families?
Well, my, my, my-
Would the media be allowed to cover?
No, my idea would be, first of all, first and foremost, would be for the governor to come and see each one of these families and talk with them one-on-one on, in, in a room. They don't need me in there, unless they ask me to be in there, they don't need the media in there, and there would be a time outside after that meeting's over with, if the family wanted to talk to the media, or the governor wanted to talk to the media, that would be their choice. But two-thirds of the problem, in my honest opinion, of why we have in Uvalde, with all these mismatched stories and all this, it's part of it because the media, because you take a soundbite, and you take a story and say, the headline says, Uvalde PD, or, uh, UCISD, and then you read the story, and it doesn't pertain to that, it's a totally different deal, but the soundbite sells the story, so everybody reads it, and most people just read the soundbite. Like I said, the media's quick to jump here in different things, they put words in people's mouth that haven't been said before, and like I said, I think that everybody has accountability here, everybody, and first and foremost. The what?
Why let the media into the meetings?
Because it's public, it's just for the public.
Well, you know what, me personally, I appreciate some of the media here, because they help us to know a lot of the issues that are coming on.
I don't have a problem with the media.
And without them, we would not be able to have the attention that we need, and the justice that we're seeking.
I'm not, I'm not against having the media in there, but I think if you're gonna have the families in there at first, that should be a private moment between the families and the governor at that time.
Absolutely.
Not, not, not a public deal? Then you could have, you could have an open meeting after that with the press invited in, in my opinion.
I, I believe that, that in this meeting, any meeting actually that's been held, I mean, I'm just an aunt of a child that was lost, I believe that these parents should have firsthand, not the media, not just, you know, I understand there's a bunch of parents that want answers. I, I understand that there's a bunch of kids involved in this, but there has to be some sort of, of a way that, in a respect, respectful manner, there has to be a way that, it could be closed, like you're saying, no media, no outsiders, no people that, you know, are just from Uvalde, these parents. I mean, you know how, how ugly it is for a family, or even parents, to see their child's name, picture all over the news, and they don't even know what's even going on with their own child, or where their own child is even at, that's ridiculous, I mean, you see, I mean, even for, for, for us that we're family, our, our child's picture is plastered all over the place from people that we don't even know, you know, and, and all that is coming from the media, that's how a lot of people are finding things out, from the media before we even know it.
And it's not always the truth.
It's not always, we're saying, yes, sir.
Or it's not always the-
Full story.
The full story.
Well, that's why people, that's why these agencies should just come out with the truth and finish this investigation, they should not be taking this on.
I agree, I couldn't agree more.
That's why, their story after story after story.
We know who perpret-
Part of it are the head of the, these agencies, because they're the ones that are speaking and saying these faults or limiting the information that they can give out, this is enough, this was a massacre.
I agree.
If it's such an important investigation of them, they should not be talking, they should not tell us we can't talk.
We can't talk, they can't talk. They're not giving us anything to talk about.
Can you put it on the agenda to add more security to the schools?
They're already, they're, they have, right now, they're, they're looking for eight to ten more officers right now.
Sir, do you know that in the school board meeting, there was one officer, and I came with a big bag, waiting to get searched, and no one searched. I could have had a gun in there. Now, they didn't ask me to look at my purse, and one officer, and that school board meeting. So my concern, and I'm glad that my kids are not, and this, this, no, live here, but my nieces too, and my nephews too. And my concern is that they're not gonna be protected, uh, my concern is that the police, Uvalde PD is gonna be too scared to protect them. That's my concern. My concern is that he can be eighteen years old, have a DED, and go into a police, um, what do you call it? A police academy. That's a huge concern. How many police officers do you have to serve this city?
The what now?
How many police officers do you have that are serving this community?
That work for the PD?
Yep.
That's your question.
What's our fourth?
Thirty-nine sworn peace officers.
Thirty-nine.
Plus dispatchers and other staff.
You got reserves too? No.
Thirty-nine, we're a population of sixteen thousand?
Yes.
Is, is that even a safe number?
In, uh, in my experience, that's actually a little, little high compared to other cities around here.
But in this area with bellouts, in this area with bellouts, because I can tell, I can, I can attest that every time we have a bailout, we have like a line of law enforcement- In this area with bellouts, because I can tell, I can, I can attest that every time we have a bailout, we have like a line of law enforcement including the city, the county, you know, border patrol, private investigators, all this stuff, and they're all kind of following each other. So, like, during that time when they're following each other, I guess that's a time to commit a crime? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm telling you is, that's how many we have and that's typical of a town our size, but obviously for the border, the border situation, they just send additional people down. And then we have, we have, we have border patrol here that are stationed here, so we, I share law enforcement, law enforcement people in the area compared to other parts of the state. That'll be my guess.
Didn't we hire extra DPS in Uvalde County?
No. DPS comes from the state.
The state did?
We don't hire DPS.
The state hired, okay.
We asked the state and they sent forty DPS officers down here eventually. Because I screened out because of all the bellouts and the school lockdowns and so forth. And so we finally got forty, and I got those forty DPS to come through the lieutenant governor at the time and, and sent them down here. They were here probably for about three months, four months, and they pulled them out of here. Still a lot of them staying here in town, but most of them are working in Del Rio or Brackville or Eagle Pass and they're here every evening.
I think it's probably time to reinstate some of that extra law enforcement, correct?
They've got all on the border.
Uh, that, that's my next deal, was, I'm just gonna tell you, I mean, it's not the time to bring it up, but in, in the last week, we're back up to almost as many or more pursuits and bellouts than we've seen in a long time. And it's gonna get a lot worse.
Well, yeah, because a lot of them are disadvantaged in this situation.
It's gonna get a lot worse in the coming months, a lot worse. Yesterday, it's not that you hadn't heard on the news yet, but yesterday, the migrant in the car was shooting at oncoming cars, trying to get away from law enforcement. It had no district, it had no regard for human life whatsoever.
Let me ask you a question, have you recently driven through a checkpoint?
Have I? Not in the last probably month.
Well, I have, and, and usually they do this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The day that they found those fifty people, I went through Eagle Pass, everybody American says that, my dad was trying to show his passport, you could vote. So what are you doing there?
Well, I mean, if you, that, that, I mean, again, that's our problem in this whole country, we have a divided country because we've got queer politicians that both of them have to have it their way or the highway, on both sides of the table. They don't sit down at a table and roll up your sleeves and negotiate and make things that work for everybody. It's either gotta be this way or it's gotta be that way. And that's not what it's about, it's about coming together and working for things that work for both of you. Because half this country wants to welcome all these people across the border and let them come into the country, of course, they're not affecting their area, they're affecting our area. The other half doesn't want them in at all, which, which I disagree with too, because I think there's a right and proper way to do it, but we're not doing it.
Half them immigrants are just passing through, they're not gonna stay in Uvalde.
That's right.
I'd rather you protect our kids than protect immigrants.
Well, we're gonna, and, and.
That's the way I'm seeing it, if we're short, if we're short officers, they need to be at the schools. Because them immigrants, they're not staying here in Uvalde, they're gonna get as far away from the border as they can, so you gotta try and pick and choose your battles.
And our governor is accountable for that, he's accountable for our safety here in Uvalde County. Knowing the information that he knows and the struggles that we go through, our governor is accountable.
Yeah.
So you have a question, uh, y'all hiring more officers for the school, correct?
We're not, the school district.
Or, I'm sorry, the school district, I'm sorry, the school district. Do you know how many officers they are hiring or what the.
Eight to, eight to tens, last I heard.
So, how, what is the protocol for that from now on? Are they gonna have like a certain amount of officers at the schools at all times?
My, my, my understanding, again, I can't speak for the school district.
Just that you know.
They're gonna make sure they have officers at every campus.
But.
A minimum of two at every campus, is last I heard. But I can't, but I can't.
On the campus patrolling or sitting in the.
No, walking the camp, I, well, again, I can't tell what they're gonna do, I can't tell.
I think the best thing is, that's a question to ask the school boards.
Right.
How many you hired and what do you plan for the school?
We can't get asked for that one, just see if by chance you guys know.
You'll find out. I'll need to go and tell them no time limits, we wanna talk for as long as we want.
I want your number before the meeting, because I want you to go to the school board on the eighth seat. I need your help.
I'll be there.
Mayor, uh, mayor, you mentioned that, uh, before that if you had information, you would release it. But now you're also mentioning that you have two letters, one from DPS and one from the DA.
You want a copy of it?
Threatening to prosecute you. If you would get information now from DPS or the investigators, would you still release it knowing that you have a threat to be prosecuted?
Yeah, because I got it from DPS and then I would assume that I would be cleared to release it because they gave it to me. So why would I fear anything then? Because if they gave it to me, they would.
What was your reaction when you got that letter?
Huh?
What was your reaction when you got that letter?
Well, you don't really wanna know what my reaction would be, wanting to tell them what they can do with their letter, to be honest.
Do you see that, do you see that as a threat, though?
I don't see it as a threat, I just see it as a control, you know, trying to control things, but at the same token, you know, you know, let's put it this way, they swing a bigger bat than I do. They got a little bit more ammunition to fire at than I do. But in my honest opinion with this letter, I'd like to tell them what my dad told a person one time, you take that letter at this corner and you roll it up as tight as you can and when it comes into a straight point, put it where the sun doesn't shine. That's what I'd like to tell them with their letters.
That letter is from, um, the DA, the district attorney?
Here's a district, a letter from the district attorney and a letter from the, you know, signed by him. There's copies, it will be, they'll be right here, you can take pictures.
Two letters.
DPS and DA.
They're right there, that's.
The next school board meeting's on the eighteenth, we can connect.
Yes, sure.
I will be there for it.
But you also said you'd go back.
Will you be there, Mr. Zora?
Huh?
Will you be there, Mr. Tarst?
Exactly.
So that's what I was gonna say. On the, on the.
Oh, you bothered him, he's taking a nap.
Chip, will you be there?
I said I would be, right?
Thank you. Mr. Lou Evinon, will you be there?
No, you can, I'll be there.
Thank you. I appreciate, and as much as all of us do, we appreciate the leadership to stand with us, not behind us, alongside with us. Because we need answers, just like you need answers.
Hold on just a second, hold on just a second. We all can't be in the same place at the same time without calling a meeting, so there'd be like three of us that could go.
No, well, he doesn't have to go, we don't, he doesn't have to go because.
He doesn't count.
No, but only, only, what are you saying, there's only three councilmen to be, mayor, two councilmen can be at one location at the same time.
If we have one, we have, we have, we have meetings.
Okay, perfect, thank you for the validation, the district mayor, I really appreciate your help and your back, and your backing up and sending out and saying, hey, look.
Her office will be in.
Being transparent for this, because that's what we need, we need us.
We, we didn't make a big rule, you were, but we just not have any.
Are y'all thinking about the school board meeting?
Y'all do.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because you know, many, uh, do y'all have vitals?
Uh-huh.
Do y'all have vitals?
Yeah. We have a charter, but we have a problem.
Do y'all have a charter of vitals that we need to follow as far as when certain people speak? Do y'all follow your vitals?
We don't, but well, the, the legislature left it when you want to speak to a certain degree, we.
Because I mean, I know the district has vitals and the district needs to follow the vitals, but I'm curious, because you were sitting in council, you need to follow your vitals.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not one that believes that I'm gonna sit up here and not, and not answer your question.
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
I'm gonna try to speak to you because you're a human being, I'm a human being.
I'm here that if you don't follow your vitals, those vitals can't be just.
See, sir, we're gonna follow Robert's rule of order, that's how we say, I'm gonna make a sure answer, that's how we run.
So no one can take you back.
I'm gonna tell first things.
It's funny, because y'all don't follow that a little bit, we can't even speak at a little meeting.